I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the Commissioner meeting of July 28th, 2021 at 6:00 PM, Sussex County Community College Performing Arts Center in Newton, New Jersey. I'm going to ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Commissioner Carney?
Here.
Director Fantasia?
Here.
Commissioner Fasano?
Here.
Commissioner Patillo?
Here.
Commissioner Yardley?
Here.
I'm going to ask that you all please stand and join me in a moment of silence and salute to the flag. This evening, I'd like you to keep in your thoughts the Branchville Mayor, Tony Fredo, who is having a medical procedure, so let's keep him in our thoughts.
It was here.
Yeah, it was.
Sorry about that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Number four is the public statement pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, PL 1975. Adequate notice as defined by Section 3D of Chapter 231, PL 1975, has been made by regular mail and email, such notice being submitted on May 5th, 2021, from the Administrative Center of the County of Sussex, located at One Spring Street, Newton, New Jersey, to the following: New Jersey Herald, Star Ledger, WSUS Radio, and WNNJ Radio, and is also posted on the bulletin board maintained in the Administrative Center for public announcements, and has been submitted to the Sussex County Clerk in compliance with said act. I ask at this time that you please mute all cell phones if you have electronic devices with you at this time. Number five is the approval of the agenda. I need a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Well, on the agenda, council, were we moving some things to...
Prerogative of one of the members, if someone wants to make a motion.
Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion. There are two items on the Personnel Report. One involves a raise and one is the secretary position. I'd like to have those moved to executive session.
Okay, the...I'm sorry, there's a raise for the...
Is it, yes.
Yes, and then there's a secretary, administrative secretary's position. Okay, so I'd like to consider those separately.
Sure.
Both of those issues separately.
Sure.
First, Commissioner Yardley is asking to motion to move the raise for the position following executive session. I assume it's for the purpose to discuss the structure of the department and roles and responsibilities in that role.
So you have a motion and a second, Mr. Director, and you're actually in the middle of taking a vote, so whoever made that motion, if they don't mind just holding their motion in abey until Mr. Yardley, since it's really based on that original motion, Mr. Yardley's motion can be heard. Who's the moving party?
Commissioner Patillo moved.
So Commissioner Patillo, as long as you're okay holding your motion, you were in the middle of a vote, in fact, you were almost done, so as long as you're okay with holding your motion in abey, it's Mr. Yardley has.
Sure, it's fine.
So, Mr. Yardley's made a motion to, I guess, essentially have two items moved on the agenda to executive session. That's my understanding, current motion?
Correct, and I'm asking if they can be considered separately.
Yeah, they absolutely can be moved to anywhere you want. They can be moved to, they can be tabled to after executive session, you can discuss them in, since they're both personnel matters.
Okay.
They can be dealt with after. That's the, that'd be the appropriate way, so that we can deal with them during executive. So there's a motion, do you need a second?
So there's a motion to table the raise, the first request from Mr. Yardley till following executive session, so that's...
There's two items, I think there's another.
That's the first.
Yep.
So that's the first one we need to consider, correct?
Yeah.
So Commissioner Yardley made the motion. Is there a second? I second that motion to move to executive session for the raise.
Good.
All those in, can we call a vote, or?
Yep.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, so that issue is now moved.
Yep.
The second is the administrative secretary position. Commissioner Yardley made the motion. Is there a second? Seeing no second, what happens in that situation?
It dies.
Okay. And it stays. So now we go back to the original motion, moved by Commissioner Patillo, and seconded, I believe, by Commissioner Fasano.
Yeah, so the agenda will be moved with one modification.
Okay. So at this point, I take the vote for the agenda being moved with the one modification.
Correct.
Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Pass. Sorry, I know that...
I said, you got it. You're all set.
All right.
Don't.
Yes. So we'll share.
Sorry, I'll be louder.
Yeah. Okay. Number seven is public hearings.
Six.
I'm sorry, on here, it's seven, on this script that I have? Six, proclamations, I apologize. Proclamations, certificates, and presentations. Number one is recognizing Eagle Scouts Alexander and Derek Lupo, for which Commissioner Patillo will present at the Court of Honor ceremony, so they are not here with us this evening. Number two is the SCUMA 50th Anniversary, which Commissioner Fasano will be presenting at that event. Also, there is no representative here, it'll be presented at the event. Number three is Aldo Sayer, 2021 Veterans Day Honoree, that will be presented at the fair by Commissioner Yardley, and the 2021 Senior of the Year will also be presented by Commissioner Yardley at the fair. I need a motion to adopt the proclamations.
Still moved.
And a second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Pass. Now, number seven, public hearings. This is the final adoption of Bond Ordinance 21-06, a bond ordinance amending Bond Ordinance Number 1801, which provides for various 2018 capital improvements heretofore finally adopted by the Board of Chosen Freeholders, now county commissioners, of the County of Sussex, State of New Jersey on March 28th, 2018, to amend the description set forth therein. I need a motion that the hearing be opened to the public.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the floor is now open to the public. Is anyone present to be heard regarding this specific ordinance? Seeing no one come forward, I would like a motion that the public hearing be closed.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Pass. Motion that this ordinance be finally adopted and authorize the clerk to advertise this ordinance as finally adopted, and also post same on the bulletin board in the lobby of the County Administrative Center. Motion, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Terry, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Patillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Yardley?
Yes.
Commissioner Fasano?
Yes.
Director Fantasia?
Yes. B, final adoption, Bond Ordinance 2107. This is a bond ordinance providing for various capital improvements by and in the County of Sussex, State of New Jersey, in reappropriating excess bond proceeds in the amount of $1,035,593 to finance the cost thereof. I need a motion that the public hearing be opened.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by saying nay. Okay, is anyone present to be heard regarding this ordinance? Seeing no one come forward, I need a motion that the public hearing be closed.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please, oh, yes, that's right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Pass. Now I need a motion that this ordinance be finally adopted and authorize the clerk to advertise this ordinance as finally adopted, and also post same on the bulletin board in the lobby of the County Administrative Center. Motion, please?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Discussion? Terry, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Patillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Yardley?
Yes.
Commissioner Fasano?
Yes.
Director Fantasia?
Yes. C, final adoption, Ordinance 2108, establishing a mid-block crosswalk on Sussex County Route 622 at a point approximately 1,550 feet east of County Route 521 at plus-minus mile marker .29 in Stillwater Township. I need a motion that the public hearing be opened.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Okay, is anyone present to be heard regarding this ordinance? Actually, if you would just come right here to the microphone there, thank you.
Lisa Chamings, Stillwater Township, the mayor, and I just wanted to say, regarding this ordinance, doing this will make it much safer for our children to move from our community center over to our playground and our ballparks, especially during our camps and activities, so I strongly urge you to continue to support this ordinance so we can have our crosswalk in Stillwater. That was all.
Thank you.
Thank you, mayor.
It was a long walk to say that.
It was almost .29 miles. Okay, seeing no one else come forward, I need a motion that the public hearing be closed.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Okay, the hearing is closed to the public. At this point, I need a motion that this ordinance be finally adopted and authorize the clerk to advertise this ordinance as finally adopted, and also post the same on the bulletin board in the lobby at the County Administrative Center. Motion, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Just real quick, Director, I did ask Administrator Poff how much this costs, just for the audience purpose. To keep our kids safe, it's approximately $800. So that way, everybody knows. Do you guys hear me out there? Can you hear me? That's $800, and that keeps our kids safe, especially in Stillwater, so I think that's a small price to pay. Thank you.
Thank you, I agree. And I want to thank Mayor Chamings for coming tonight and speaking with us, we appreciate that. Okay, at this point, uh... No, that's what she's going to. At this point, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Patillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Yardley?
Yes.
Commissioner Fasano?
Yes.
Director Fantasia?
Yes. Okay, number eight is our public session from the floor. This public session is for those wishing to make a comment of three minutes or less regarding an agenda item. Please line up at the microphone and maintain six feet social distance with other attendees. Please state your name, your municipality, and the agenda topic for the record. I need a motion to open the floor for public comment.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay? Okay, the floor is now open for the public. Okay, seeing nobody come forward, I need a motion to close the floor for public comment on agenda items.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Okay. Number nine, commissioners' comments. We're going to begin tonight with Commissioner Carney.
Thank you, Director. I'm going to be short, I don't have much to go over regarding engineering, just to go, there's the Bridge X-11, it's County Route 639, AKA Loomis Avenue in Wantage. They installed the soil erosion sediment control and traffic control, that's complete. Flow maintenance measures, complete. Construct Stage 1 deck repairs is complete, along with 2, Stage 2 deck repairs, complete. Traffic control, complete. They're going to switch over to Stage 3. During this time, they will still have, it'll still be one-way right now, they have a light, which is kind of a pain in the butt. If you could, if you know your way around Wantage, I would go the other way, but that's coming to an end shortly. I did get to meet with Christina Marks again, I got to visit one of the garages in Wantage again, across from the airport, actually a quarter of a mile down from this site. Vernon also came along, so I spoke to them for about an hour and a half, went over their concerns regarding on how things work, pay, new vehicles, and so on and so forth. They're a good group of people, good group of workers, that it was very odd to hear them say that they would like to do more, which is odd, because not many people ever say they want to do more. So that was actually the first garage, or any employee that I've actually talked to that said they wanted to do more. So again, I'm a big advocate for helping out in the engineer department. I think we could save money, spending a little bit to save, especially with the bridges that we're doing. They used to do two or three, and I've said this meetings prior, two or three a year, and we're down to one. And the savings alone is just astronomical, and they're willing to do it, they're willing to do that. I know we have some money that's coming with the American Rescue Plan, and I think some of it needs to go to infrastructure. I also met, Christine and I met with the CWA and Diana DeRisi, DeRisi. That went well, Herb was there as well. I think that went very good, we're going to have another meeting in three months, those quarterly meetings go well, I think it's a good open dialogue that we have. I think we get a lot accomplished, I think that meeting was an hour and a half, I think, Herb, right? And it's just, it's good, there's a very good relationship coming along, I think we've moved very, very far from what it was prior to what we have now. So, that's all I have, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Okay, next, Commissioner Yardley?
Thank you. Sure, just very short. There'll be a tribute to the troops at the New Jersey State Fair, you talked about that, but I'll be presenting a certificate to Lieutenant Commander Retired Aldo Sayer on...
Herb, I can't hear a word you're saying.
You can.
No, slow down a little bit, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
I will be. I'll be presenting a certificate to Lieutenant Commander Retired Aldo Sayer on Wednesday, August 11th, at the New Jersey State Fair during the tribute to troops, to the troops. Mr. Sayer entered the Navy in 1942 and served on active duty until 1946, when he began a 22-career in the US Naval Reserve. Mr. Sayer is a role model who's been dedicated to helping others and actively volunteering with a number of organizations for the past 70 years. Among many organizations, he's been a member of the Sussex County Fair Association since 1938, when the fair was named the Branchville Fair, and is a member of the Sussex County Salute to Military Veterans Committee since its inception 16 years ago. Mr. Sayer also just returned 100 years old, continues to make a difference in his community, his church, and many organization. He's a, he is deserving of this most prestigious honor. That's my report, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Patillo?
Well, good evening, I hope everyone is enjoying the summer. It seems to be flying by. Today, we have two health clinics that I'd like to speak about. The first one is a women's health clinic that'll be held on Tuesday, August 3rd, from 4:00 PM to 8:30 PM, at the Office of Public Health Nursing, and that is at 201 Wheatsworth Road in Hamburg. Appointments are required and can be made by calling the Office of Public Health Nursing at 973-579-0570, extension 1246. The second clinic is a health clinic that will be on Tuesday, August 10th, also, at the Office of Public Health Nursing, but this clinic offers vaccines for adults and school-aged children. There is no fee for vaccines if uninsured or underinsured. The clinic also offers a variety of health screenings. Please call 973-579-0570, extension 1211, to schedule an appointment for that clinic. Next, and I spoke about this at our last meeting, is the Senior Farmers Market Nutrition Program. This is a very important program for seniors. It provides eligible seniors aged 60 years and older with $30 in vouchers to be used at local participating farm stands. Vouchers will be available at Null Heights in Sparta on Thursday, July 29th, the Franklin Senior Center on Friday, July 30th, or through the Division of Senior Services. And for more information, please contact Senior Services at 973-579-0555. Next is from Public Health Nursing. From July 1st through July 26th, there were 151 reportable communicable diseases investigated by Public Health Nursing in Sussex County. This number does not include COVID investigations. Lyme disease remains the most investigated disease. There is active ongoing tuberculosis case, there's one active case, and two lead cases. For domestic or wild bite exposure reports, there were 64 domestic or wild bite exposure reports from animals that required follow-up investigations. The animals involved were 23 dogs, eight cats, 13 bats, three raccoons, one groundhog, and one snake. I have one more, just hold on, okay. The Sussex County Farm and Horse Show opens on Saturday, August 7th, from 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM daily until August 15th, and it's nice to have it back, everybody missed it last year. Senior Day at the Fair will be held on the morning of Thursday, August 12th, under the Performing Arts Tent, and during the activities, the county will announce the 2021 Sussex County Senior of the Year. That is a great event for our seniors, and that is an exciting time for the award of such a special Senior of the Year. And when you come and hear the stories of our seniors, it's amazing, all that they have accomplished and all that they do for other people. They are very generous and caring people, and it's wonderful to be able to give them that award. Skylin's Ride will be providing transportation to the fair, those in need of transportation can call Skylin's Ride at 973-579-0480. Next is the CLER Recovery Program, and interesting enough, they're celebrating their fifth year, their anniversary of five years. It's amazing to me, all the work that they have accomplished in five years, all the people and lives that they touched, and so many of them have been successful through recovery. This year, they're asking you to please save the date, September 17th, because that is when they will celebrate and have their festivities, and information about where and when will be out soon. On Saturday, August 7th, the annual Changing the Face of Addiction Walk will be held at the Franklin Fireman Pavilion, and it will begin at 10:00 AM. That's it for me, thank you.
Thank you. Next, Deputy Director Fasano?
Thank you, Director Fantasia, and thank you to all who are joining us this evening. Just some latest from a COVID vaccine perspective. The state of New Jersey is reporting 151,291 doses have been administered, with 75,101 county residents now fully vaccinated. Sussex County continues to offer free at-home COVID-19 testing available to all of our residents, and is continuing our vaccination efforts with pop-up vaccination clinics located throughout the county. This is in addition to the Office of Public Health Nursing, offering vaccination clinics every Thursday from 2:00 to 4:00 at their location in Wheatsworth Road in Hamburg. And the Sussex County Division of Senior Services is available to assist our residents, 65 or older, in securing vaccination appointments, so if you or someone you know is in need of that assistance, please, please give them a call at 973-579-0555. And as always, all this information, including the latest updates and links to nearly a dozen other vaccination clinics and sponsors in our area, is all available on our COVID-19 webpage, which is simply sussex nj.us/covid19. Next, the Dennis Branch of the Sussex County Library, located right down the block from here on Main Street, will be closed starting today through this Friday, July 30th, due to building maintenance, and will be reopening this Saturday, returning to their normal operating schedule. I'm sure, as the Board remembers, it was not that long ago that the Sussex County Commissioner Board adopted Sussex County's annual budget, that wasn't that long ago. And I'm sure you are just as excited as I am with the report that the work has officially begun on next year's budget within all of our county departments, it's very exciting, because this marks the beginning of a process that will yield the final product after more than nine months of work, planning, and deliberation here at the county level. And finally, as Sylvia mentioned, my favorite event of the year, the Sussex County Fair is returning this year, and it is absolutely going to be a hit this year, I think the level of excitement this year is off the charts. I had the opportunity to go over there last weekend, just the people who were there prepping were excited, I got offered cotton candy, so like, we're really doing this, the fair's going to happen in a few weeks, and that's really exciting. For more information about this year's fair, please visit sussexcountyfairgrounds.org. And with that, Director, that concludes my report for tonight.
Thank you. Okay, for my report, I'm going to continue with some more information from the Health Department. Just so you're aware, COVID-19 testing, we still have our free at-home test kits through the County of Sussex, through both Lab Core and Vault, Vault is the saliva test, and children as young as six years old can use that test. We also have the Lab Core nasal swab test available. You can visit the Sussex County website to schedule your at-home test. The total number of COVID-19 cases in Sussex County since the inception of COVID is 14,695, so that represents about 10.5% of our total population. Now, speaking with recent numbers, the New Jersey Department of Health Activity Level Report that they put out each week, the report as of July 17th indicated that our region is considered yellow. So if you recall, it's color-coded, we're considered moderate activity level due to a spike in the Delta variant COVID cases. The weekly COVID report dated July 23rd indicates an average of about seven cases per day here in Sussex County. Now, also, in the month of July, we do have one reported COVID death, as far as the information that I have received. Also, talk to you a little bit more about the Delta variant. At this time, the Delta variant is the dominant variety that you hear about in the news in New Jersey. There is no specific data on the Delta variant that was provided to us at this point in the county, but the percentage of the Delta variant is 74.5% of all of the cases that are noted in the state. Now, not all COVID positives are tested for that variant, there are certain criteria to test for that, so specific specimens are sent to Public Health and Environmental Lab for variant testing, and that's the state. So basically, if someone had traveled recently to a country of concern, if there was a suspected COVID-19 reinfection, any cases associated with a specific outbreak or cluster, or any case that occurred after an individual was considered fully immunized. So those are the types of cases that they are sending to be tested to see if there are any trends with that variant. Now, there's approximately a 16-to-24-day delay from specimen collection and report to the Department of Health to have it sent back, and the results are sent to the New Jersey Department of Health, not the individual's submitters. So variant testing is done from the original specimen, it's easier if it's sent from the hospital than a lab, as hospitals are better able to gather pertinent information directly from the patient. So that's just a little bit of information that we were able to get from the county level and our county health department, as the Delta variant is being monitored. Also, I do want to point out, we have a monthly mayor's meeting, now when COVID was flaring... Now, when COVID was flaring and was, was in its hot time in the county, we did a bi-monthly mayor's call. We now do a monthly mayor's call, where we have all representation from every municipality on the line, and the health department speaks and gives updates. However, this mayor's monthly meeting that's coming up also branches out a bit. The Sussex Elks Lodge, 2288, past exalted ruler Patricia Green and Ashley Green, will be presenting information about the moving wall at the next Division of Health Monthly Mayor's Meeting. So that's on a conference call on August 3rd. So if you would like more information on the moving wall, that is the tribute to the anniversary of 9/11, you can call nine seven three five seven nine zero five seven zero. Now, I have just a couple other health, or one other health-related updates, so you are aware. There is a virus that's spread by mosquitoes. It's called the Jamestown Canyon Virus, and it's extraordinarily rare. There's about fifteen cases per year in the entire country, mostly, I believe Minnesota is, is a hotbed for, for that virus. Well, Sussex County did experience its first case in the state of New Jersey of Jamestown Canyon Virus. There are currently no set treatments for it, there's no vaccine for it. It presents with a very high fever and neurological damage, and it's very serious. So when that's identified, the Office of Mosquito Control works directly with the state. They do their spraying, but they also cordon off the area. Now, where it was actually located in One Pool in Sussex County is in a very, very, very remote area that's very rarely even contacted by people. So cordoning it off was not, was not difficult, and it was located in the Walk Hill Refuge. So just so you're aware of that, if you see, you know, any, any information about that, please be diligent, use insect repellent when you go out, but a case was found in Sussex As far as the Sheriff's Department, I do have one update that I wanted to share with you. The, well, actually, a little bit of happy news, the Sussex County Sheriff's Department, we wanted to congratulate the men and women of the Sheriff's Office. They brought home the first-place trophy from the First Responder Coed Softball Tournament that just happened, and it was a nice group of, of individuals that looked like they had a good time, and again, they won. So our Sheriff's Department's something to be proud of there. Also, some other news regarding the Sheriff's Department, we have a canine, I don't know if you've seen the dog out and about, Nutmeg. And Nutmeg and Detective Kathy Young attended the National Police Bloodhound Association Spring Seminar in McHenry, Maryland. I met Nutmeg when, I think that she first came on a few years back at, at an event in Sparta, and she was just earning her sea legs there. And she actually took a forty-hour block of instruction and a one-day classroom refresher courses, and they did paws-on-the-pavement training, and all the dogs are tested in different kinds of agility trials and terrains, and Nutmeg approached her training with her best paw forward, and she made easy work of a twenty-four-plus hour old trail, and she ran the entirety of over a one-mile-long trail. So she made smooth sailing, she achieved her second national man-trailing certification. So we are in good hands here in the county with our bloodhound, Nutmeg. Now, moving on to just another issue that I want to touch on, we've talked about this more than once at these meetings, and we're all aware that there is going to be a question, a ballot question regarding an investigation into the deaths in New Jersey nursing and veterans' homes. We do know that the U.S. Department of Justice had requested information regarding the spread of COVID-19 in the state-operated nursing and veterans' homes. Now, three states provided that information to the Department of Justice's satisfaction as reported, but however, New Jersey, rather than provide all the data requested, investigators at the federal level said the state instead referred them to New Jersey's website, which did not contain the information that they were seeking. So in a letter to Governor Murphy's administration on Tuesday, the U.S. Attorney's Office and the Justice Department Civil Rights Division said they are going to be launching an investigation, but it's narrow, and it's important that we make this distinction. They are making an investigation into the veterans' homes in Menlo Park, in Paramus, and Vineland. So those are the actual veterans' homes, not the nursing homes. We are not speaking about Andover Subacute up here or any of ours. It's centered specifically on these three facilities, and they're seeking, under the Civil Rights of Institutionalized Persons Act. So they're trying to determine if there are any systemic violations of the Constitution or laws of the United States that were broken in these veterans' homes, whether the homes engage in a pattern or practice, and I'm going to quote here from U.S. Attorney Craig Carpenito and Eric S. Drybend, who is the Assistant Attorney General for the Civil Rights Division, I'm going to quote here. "Our investigations will focus on whether the veterans' homes engage in a pattern or practice violating the rights of veteran residents under the U.S. Constitutional or Federal statute by failing to provide them adequate medical care." So, as you are aware, I don't believe it's sufficient for an investigation as to what happened. I'm very pleased that they are pushing forward for the veterans' homes, because as we know, I believe one in three individuals that were in a veterans' home in the state of New Jersey did perish due to COVID. So, at this point, our concern in the county is also the individuals who died in our nursing and long-term care facilities that were not specific to veterans. So we have no intention, as a board, of pulling back on our push for a bipartisan investigation at the state level, nor, as you can tell, the federal government continues to have a hard time obtaining accurate or complete information from the state of New Jersey. I don't know if the state is unable to provide that information to the federal government, what luck Sussex County is going to have. So this may quite possibly push our hand, again, with our ballot question, to seek legal action against the state of New Jersey to get the documents that we have opred. We've waited now well over fourteen months for that, so we're watching very carefully whether the state changes their tune and becomes more transparent, because I think it is quite a stain and an embarrassment for the state of New Jersey to be one of four states singled out for refusing to comply with a federal investigation. Now, keep in mind, New York, Governor Cuomo, and think what you know about what you've read in the news about what happened in New York, and they complied with information that was asked of them. In New Jersey, and the Murphy administration seems to have a difficult time with that. But just know that this board is committed to serving our residents with fidelity, and we have compassion for the families who have lost loved ones in the nursing homes due to horrific mismanagement at the state level and down. So that is the update, we will keep you posted as, as it comes. It is a developing story as we speak. And that's my report for this evening. We're moving on to number 10, the approval of the consent agenda. A, oh, I'm not going to go through each of these, we have A through L. So the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Sussex has reviewed the consent agenda consisting of various proposed resolutions, and determined that adoption of the said resolutions is in and will further the public interest. If any commissioner would like to remove an item to be considered separately, please do so now. So at this point, I need a motion to adopt the consent agenda, A through L.
So moved.
Second.
Second. And discussion? I have a discussion point. If you look at Resolution G, that is the authorization to accept the fiscal year 21 body-worn camera grant program in the amount of a hundred eight thousand and fourteen dollars. That runs a span from 2021 to 2025. I wanted to make sure that that was indeed realistic numbers, and we did not require additional money from the state, and it was not an unfunded mandate, and those numbers actually represent what our Sheriff's Department or Prosecutor's Office has put forward as their estimated expenses for compliance. So again, we want to just keep an eye on the fact that we are receiving the proper funding, and that we are getting the proper amount of equipment that we need to comply with this directive. So just so you know, I did follow up on G. Okay, if there's no other discussion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, signify nay. Okay, pass. Number 11, approval of the minutes. Regular meeting, July 14th, 2021, all are eligible to vote, and I will be recusing myself from this vote, but I do need a motion to approve the minutes from the regular July 14th, 2021 meeting.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And I abstain? Thank you. Number 12, appointments and/or resignations, there are none. Okay, number 13 are resolutions. I need a motion to adopt Resolutions A through O.
So moved.
Second.
I also would like to bring up a discussion point to bring to your attention. You can see here Resolution M, that is the authorization to purchase voting equipment and electronic poll books for the Sussex County Board of Elections to Election System Software. We are in receipt of funding, and actually, at the agenda meeting, it was really information that was in real-time, hot off the presses, where Administrator Poff had just received confirmation. We do know that the New Jersey Association of Counties has stood together in solidarity to ensure that we are receiving funding again from the state, and that it would not be an unfunded mandate, and we were informed that we would be receiving funding to cover things such as the additional poll books, the equipment, additional staff, and early voting. So that's another, another positive for us, and I'd really like to thank the New Jersey Association of Counties for being steadfast with that and being proactive, knowing what has happened in the past, and us waiting significant amounts of time for reimbursement. So is there any other discussion for any of the resolutions? Terry, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Patillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Yardley?
Yes.
Commissioner Fasano?
Yes.
Director Fantasia.
Yes. Okay, number 14, awards of contract change orders and bid. We have Resolutions A through C. The Board of County Commissioners of the County of Sussex has reviewed the award of contract change orders bids consisting of various proposed resolutions, and determined that adoption of the said resolutions is in and will further the public interest. So I would like a motion to adopt Resolutions A through C.
So moved.
Second.
Terry, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Patillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Yardley?
Yes.
Commissioner Fasano?
Yes.
Director Fantasia.
Yes. Number 15, financial, resolution for payment of the bills list, July 28th, 2021. I need a motion to pay the bills.
So moved.
And a second?
And a second.
Terry, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Patillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Yardley?
Yes.
Commissioner Fasano?
Yes.
Director Fantasia.
Yes. Number 16, the personnel agenda, resolution authorizing the personnel agenda of July 28th, 2021. Now, again, we have made changes to that personnel agenda at the start of the meeting, so I need a motion to adopt the personnel agenda as amended at the start of the meeting.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Terry, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Patillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Yardley?
No.
Commissioner Fasano?
Yes.
Director Fantasia.
Yes. Number 17, administrative report, Administrator Poff?
Thank you, Director. As we've got quite a bit of work in, before us in executive session, I'll keep my report brief. Just a brief financial update, revenue is collected at fifty-six point four percent of the budget, which is encouraging and shows us that the county is starting to recover from the impacts of the pandemic. The County Clerk's Office continues to see a steady flow of revenue as the real estate market is still strong. Interest income is not meeting our expectations, as interest rates are still very low. Our general expenditures are at sixty-two percent of the budget, but that is expected, given the fact that we do have some very large expenses that we encumber for the full year shortly after the budget is adopted, such as our general liability and workers' compensation insurance, pension and debt service, all of which are rather substantial costs. If you look just at the operating side of expenditures, we're closer to a target of forty percent of the budget, which is where we would expect to be. Commissioner Carney mentioned Bridge X-11 and Wantage. The final paving and guide rail installation is anticipated, beginning the first or second week of August, with the exact, the exact scheduled dates still to be determined. And finally, the county striping program, of which the, the board had taken action to advance the award of that contract. I am very pleased to report that Phase 1 of that project, or approximately forty percent of the total project, has been completed, and Phase 2 has begun, and that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Number 18, county council, is there any report for the public?
Sure. First of all, I just want to say thank you and good evening to everybody. Welcome the opportunity to, to serve Sussex County. Been practicing law for twenty-seven years now, primarily just south of y'all in, in Warren County, but Sussex County being the same sort of rural makeup as my own county. It's, it's not a far, thank you. Not a far trip, not a lot of different issues. I have just a handful of updates for you from a public perspective. The American Rescue Plan Act, county councils offices join the county's ARPA stakeholders team, that's the team that providing legal guidance in the distribution of the Sussex County's American Republic, excuse me, Recovery Plan Act funds. Those are funds that are coming to Sussex County via the federal government for relief from the COVID pandemic. We've been working with the team to verify that the distributions that the county will be considering fall within the terms of, of ARPA, and also the guidelines set out by way of Treasury in their interim final rule, again, to make sure that the county's in full compliance with every distribution, or every, yeah, every distribution that it will intend to make. You've opted earlier tonight to adopt two resolutions that we had prepared, both related to the opioid litigation. The county had joined opioid lawsuits, both against Purdue Pharma and Mallinckrodt LLC, related to their production and participation in opioid manufacturing. Both of those suits have reached the point where there are Chapter 11 reorganization plans being proposed with both companies to the court to distribute what, in essence, is close to twenty-six billion dollars in settlement proceeds to states, counties, and municipalities around the country. And while the bulk of that money is specifically set aside for abatement of the opioid crisis itself, in other words, the proceeds that would come to the individual governmental entities can't be used in your, your general budget, they will provide a means for you to restrict, track the sale of marketing at Obleeds, and hopefully correct the ongoing oversights that led to the crisis in the first place. So if the county didn't opt to vote for those plans, then what happens is litigation continues, you guys continue to, you potentially incur the cost associated with ongoing litigation against all of those entities, and that pot of money just doesn't exist, and there's no money to be distributed amongst the various governmental entities. The special counsel that has been assigned by prior counsel and the commission recommended to you your participation in both plans, we had reviewed those and joined in that recommendation, so those resolutions weren't out to tonight, and your, your votes would be conveyed to the, to the respective courts. Other than that, regarding ongoing other litigations, I'm gonna go through some of those with you tonight in executive session, as there are a handful. I don't have my first full report related to the, the various ongoing litigation matters, as we're still collecting information from your various special counsel, but by the time we're here for your August meeting, I'll have a much more detailed and individual and concise report about the various pieces of litigation. Other than that, I just thank you for the opportunity. Hopefully, we've met your expectation. Hopefully, we've met your expectations in the first month that we've been here and look forward to exceeding them. So thank you.
Thank you.
Could I just say something? I'd like to thank Doug Steinhardt for your first monthly report. I think I find it interesting and I want to thank you for that.
Sir, thank you very much.
Okay, we're moving on to number 19, which is unfinished business. Does any commissioner have unfinished business they wish to discuss? And number 20 is new business. Any new business? Okay, now number 21 is public session from the floor. This public session is for those wishing to make general comments of three minutes or less on non-agenda topics. Please line up at the microphone and maintain six feet social distance with other attendees. Please state your name and municipality for the record. So I need a motion to open the floor for public comment of non-agenda items.
So moved.
Second?
Sylvia, did you make the...
I did.
I'll make in a second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, signify nay. Okay, the floor is now open for public comment.
Hi, guys. Steve Silvagio, Opac On. Good evening, commissioners. Thank you for your dedication and service to the community. I'd like to make you aware of something and provide a recommendation. It's not dialogue, just pointing out facts and a major concern of mine. It's hard to take the news media seriously nowadays from their pathetic left-wing agenda that fits the narrative, the way they treated Trump during his presidency and currently and to the present day. I'm not lying here. Look how Black Lives Matter and Antifa destroyed well-known cities last year and ended this year, and major news outlets refused to cover it. It's incredible. Only over $2 billion in damage from these groups and the news is more worried about how much golf Trump is playing. The fake news media at times just makes me physically ill, so I don't watch too much TV and I really just try to follow local politics. It's the reason why I come to these meetings. Getting to my point, there's a dark cloud that hangs over Sussex County and this, ladies and gentlemen, is New Jersey Herald. I can go on and on about the retracted articles and their obvious bias toward Republicans when they write, but I'm here to discuss one specific article written by the Herald on July 16th, which was 100% not accurate and reported on a statement made by a private citizen at the meeting. That's right, a public citizen was misquoted. She is a private citizen, so getting it wrong is particularly serious. You can hear for yourselves, the report is on a recording of the meeting and it tells two opposite stories. It's very concerning that the Herald reports lies and misleading statements when the proof is on tape. It does a disservice to the community and it deters hard-working people from coming to and speaking at these meetings. Director Fantasia, I'm recommending you and the rest of the commissioners to please consider getting rid of the Herald and look around for other newspaper outlets to cover meetings, or possible request another reporter does not cover these meetings since it's an injustice to society. This isn't the first or the last article that the Herald will botch, just a matter of when. Thank you very much for letting me speak, guys. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's John Dolmison. I'm from Frankfurt Township. I was going to ask you this evening, because the DOJ had dropped the investigation of nursing homes into all the states, one of them being ours, if that was going to affect our resolution, but you've answered my question for me. With that being said, the fact that Murphy didn't and our state didn't cooperate with the federal government is strictly because Murphy is up for reelection this year and the fact that he would put politics and his own reelection ahead of people's lives is shameful at best and is another reason why this man shouldn't be our governor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Peter Neip from Frankfurt. I hope everyone is enjoying the summer. I certainly am. I'm here to talk about an important investment, which I have broached to the board, I guess, continuously for the past three years. And that investment is necessary for the well-being and future of Sussex County. And that investment is for the board to allocate funding and the creation or filling of the role of economic development within the existing planning and economic development department. I've remunerated many times the benefits to be derived from such a role being taken up. This role has been empty for several years now and there is really no documented evidence that the county as itself has made strategic efforts for economic growth. I'd like to provide the common definition of investment, and that is, quote, "To invest is to allocate money with the expectation of a positive benefit return in the future." We now, as a county, can expect, I believe it's 27-plus million dollars from the Fed for the Recovery Act. One of the major opportunities is to apply that to the economic development of the county that would aid in the recovery from the pandemic for small businesses, as well as creating the basis for future smart growth. And I want to just remind everybody what I speak of smart growth. That is growing taxable ratables, creating jobs, and most importantly, keeping Sussex County the wonderful rural community that it is. So I beg that you consider applying some of this windfall, if you could call it that, to finally filling that role within the county government. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Ruby Sanders Newton. I second everything that Steve Silvagio has said. I do not appreciate being misquoted from the New Jersey Herald. I actually didn't even know about it because I don't read the Herald anyway, but somebody messaged me and said, "Oh, your name is in the Herald," so that's why I took a look. And it was definitely a misquote and I don't appreciate that. So I would ask the same thing of the board, to find somebody else to cover who isn't so biased. Also, I spoke about medical freedom. Again, I'm going to ask the board to pass some kind of resolution regarding that, whether it's effective or not, doesn't matter. The point is, medical freedom is something, it's a big topic and I... You guys have all the stuff that I needed to say. If you want more, I can send more. And I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no one else come forward, make a motion to close the meeting to the public?
I'll make the motion.
Public session, rather. I'm sorry, let me rephrase that. We are not closing the meeting to the public. We are closing public session.
I'll make the motion.
I'll make the motion.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye and opposed by nay. Okay, the meeting is closed to the public. Does any commissioner have any response for the public from their comments?
I would like to say, Peter, he's over there. You're not aware of this, but for almost a year now, there is a Economic Sustainable Plan Committee, Steering Committee, that the Highlands Council has put together. I happen to represent Sussex County along with Tammy Horstfield from Economic Development Chamber of Commerce. And the discussions about sustainability in the seven counties that are in the Highlands regional area has been going on. We've hired a firm to work with us and they're listening to all the different aspects of the situations that every town and every county is in. And the Steering Committee is doing very, very well. So I think when this Steering Committee is done and all of the information is collected and the reports come out, I think the Highlands Council is going to be of great help to initiate different things that we might be able to do. You know, the Highlands Council is the one that has all the money. They have about 10 or 12 million dollars that they use for grants. So they'll make that available to counties that need it to continue with their, not just continue, but to actually target what different counties need. Although it's a group effort, it's an individual effort as well for each county. So there's a lot of information coming into that. There's a lot of conversation and discussions. And I think when they're finally done with their reports, you'll see a great deal of help come to the counties for economic development.
Also for... That's your prerogative?
Yeah, sure.
I object. I object.
Okay.
Just going to say...
Speech to me afterwards.
It's a change of protocol and if we're going to my opinion and council's here, if you answer him, you answer every single person in the audience.
The commissioner's right.
I'll be here afterwards.
With all due respect, Mr. Neip, like we've adopted an agenda. I'll chat with the commissioners later anyway, but you know, we've gone through public session. We've moved on to this other piece, but we can't. It's not really intended to be a colloquial or dialogue back and forth. I'm sure a commissioner will answer your question after the meeting, though.
Thank you. Also, I would like to make note for Mr. Neip and for the public, Commissioner Fasano and I are on the Subcommittee for the American Rescue Plan Funds. And a very, very large portion of our conversation with our administrator and with Mr. Steinhardt were what are the acceptable items, acceptable programs that we could spend the funding on with a specific focus on business and basically stimulating business growth. And we also discussed the importance of, A, reaching out to businesses also through the Chamber of Commerce and then in other mechanisms to find out what they feel they would need to be able to stimulate, because it's fine for five people, six people to sit in a room and make these determinations of what people need, but without having that feedback from the public, from individuals much like yourself, from business owners as well, to have these individuals be able to inform us what they feel would be effective and would help their businesses thrive or grow or even start a new business, balancing that information with our attorney's guidance on how these funds could be spent. Just know that it is a priority with those funds, because we have been actually held, in my personal opinion, I cannot speak for the board, but we have been held under the thumb of the Highlands Act in many ways and have been treated unfairly from school funding all the way up through business development. It's been a thorn in our side. And again, I speak for myself as Commissioner Fantasia. I cannot speak for the entire board. So hopefully, with these funds, certain things could be addressed, you know, for some type of financial stimulus due to this.
If I could make a comment? The Chamber of Commerce, their economic development program has been meeting to develop programs for the county. COVID has caused some of those problems for those programs to move forward and they are in the process of doing outreach to try to bring people and companies to the county as well as tourism. So just wanted to mention that.
Okay, thank you. Now on to number 22. It is reminders. Again, it's our stock reminder to check the county's website. It is the one-stop shop for anything you would possibly need, www.sussex nj.us for meeting schedules. And if you happen to know, I want to point out, a senior citizen who does not have internet access can always, always call the office to be able to be put in contact. Social Services, Carol Navarre, will always, always guide in the right direction. The pandemic really did shine a light on some of the digital disconnect that our older population does have. So please, please encourage them, or you may call on behalf of any of your senior friends and family who may be having a difficult time navigating our website. So now on to number 23. It is executive session. It is a closed session, a resolution, providing for an executive closed session not open to the public in accordance with the provisions of NJSA 10:4-12. And I'll turn it to our clerk. Whereas the subject matter is about to be discussed, may be excluded from the public portion of the meeting by resolution of the Board of County Commissioners, as the exception to the open public meetings, backroom students, and NJSA 10:4-12. And whereas it appears necessary to the Board of County Commissioners to discuss this matter in executive session, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners in the County of Sussex in accordance with the provisions of NJSA 10:4-12 and NJSA 10:4-13, that the Board at this time enter into an executive session, for which the public shall be excluded. And be it further resolved that the general nature of the subject to be discussed relates to the following items authorized by NJSA 10:4-12 and designated. May I pause you right there, because I think the recording may not be, you know, picking you up. So I'm going to read into the microphone those issues just for the public, so you hear exactly what's happening in executive session, because I'm having a hard time even hearing the amplification. Number seven, matters relating to litigation, negotiations, and the attorney-client privilege. That's contract negotiations, PBA 138 Prosecutor's Unit, PBA 138 Sheriff's Unit, attorney-client privileged communication, litigation regarding Mallinckrodt PLC et al. and debtors. And number eight, matters relating to the employment relationship, personnel policies, and the creation of a new position.
Be it further resolved that the deliberations conducted in closed session may be disclosed to the public upon the determination of the Sussex County Board of County Commissioners or provided by law that the public interest will no longer be served by such confidentiality. And be it further resolved that upon completion of the business for which the Board has entered into the executive session, the Board shall reconvene and resume its meeting open to the public. And be it further resolved that the Board, do they expect to or not expect to take formal action after...
We may take formal action based upon the tabled item of Commissioner Yardley.
Okay, so the Board may take formal action after returning from executive session. So just the motion.
Okay. So I need a motion to adopt the executive session resolution and enter into executive session.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye and opposed, nay. Okay, we will now be entering into executive session. The public, thank you for attending. You're willing to, you know, you are more than welcome to stay. We'll be returning following. Again, we may or may not take action. We anticipate to be gone no longer than one hour. Okay, I need a motion to leave executive session and enter into regular business.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye and opposed, nay. Okay, we are returning to regular business. At this time, we are going to revisit the tabled item on the personnel agenda regarding the $3,000 raise for the one employee position, I believe in Central and Shared Services. So I need a motion to approve that item.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Discussion? Terry, would you please call the roll?
I'm sorry, I lost my roll call. Commissioner Yardley?
No.
Commissioner Fasano?
Yes.
Director Fantasia?
Yes.
Commissioner Patillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Carney?
Yes.
Pass. Okay, at this moment, I need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Meeting adjourned.